All right, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and join Councilman Rob in the pledge to our flag and country?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Wise and loving God, I say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the health we need to fulfill our callings and for sustaining us daily. Thank you we can be involved in this useful work and for the honor of bearing the responsibilities entrusted to us. Thank you for the freedom to worship you. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the city officials, and in particular, this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Guthrie, Oklahoma. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Inspirational again. Hey, I'd like to call Turner, our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of June 6th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have anything? Tim, do you have anything? None. Third item is consent agenda. Only one item on the consent agenda, A, is the approval of Public Works Authority meeting of May 16th. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes, please.
How about three?
See the votes. You announce the rule of consent agenda. Item A. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve change order number three, Section A to the wastewater treatment construction project, increasing the construction amount to, from, or with HCCCO, Company of Tulsa. Leroy, are you taking this?
We're going to tag team it.
Okay.
Mr. Faulkner may participate and Mr. Baker as well. I put a report at your desk that I will be using to go over, and item four, five, and six are all covered in this report, so I will go through all of them, and then you can vote on them one at a time if you want. And I'll do the initial presentation because I've pretty much been here through this project. And Eddie, Mr. Faulkner, are still new to some of these projects, and then Tenny will answer some of the more detailed questions if you have them.
Right. So, as he indicated on the first page of the report, it identifies the agenda items four, five, and six. On item four is change order number three to the wastewater treatment contract with And the actual change order is attached to this document, but I tried to summarize it to make it easier on this report. The items being amended is 51,000 square yards of sod and 800 tons of riprap. That's to stabilize the site. Overhead cooling doors, it's a change out of the type of door that rolls up and over to a cooling door to give more ceiling or headroom. A new trailer pump, and that's more than just a pump, it has a lot of hoses in it. It will be multipurpose. It will serve more than the wastewater treatment plant if we need. For example, we have two pumps at Cottonwood Creek intake that provides water. If one of those goes down, this pump could be a substitute for one of those while we're getting one repaired. It could be used in any of our lift stations. It could be used in any major water leak. So this pump's multipurpose. It's mobile, can be used different locations. Radio tire foundation, the line of site for the communication between the tires, the tire had to be a little taller, so we had to elevate the tire, and that's what the tire foundations. So that change order is $411,575.42. This change order will also add 187 calendar days to the construction schedule, set for a total of 940 for the entire contract from start to finish. And the scheduled deadline for completion will now be the 18th of October of this year. I'll go through all of this, and then I'll come back, and either one of the three of us will address questions. On the second page, wastewater treatment engineering service agreement with Myers. OWRB requires a full-time, on-site, resident project representative or inspector. The pipes we're putting underground, if you think about, the plant was built in 1955. So those pipes and fittings are going to be behind concrete and underground for 50, 60 years, so you want to make sure they're put in right. You want an inspector. City does not have the manpower to fill this obligation. We don't have a full crew, so we can't break somebody loose to dedicate to inspecting five days a week on this project, but we are required to do it. The initial resident project represented was estimated for roughly 525 calendar days. That estimate was done in 2016 under the previous city manager when the agreement with Myers was done. That estimate was provided prior to the final design, so that's what it was, just an estimate. And also, it was based on 2016 hourly rates. With HC, HCCCO now with their notice to proceed and the additional days provided by the change order, the calendar days is 940 through May 8th. We had paid Myers almost $616,000 for resident project inspection, so that would require amendment number three of $345,945.50 to pay through the last invoice of May 8th. And then we calculated to finish out the project to October 18th, which is when the project should be totally completed, the additional $104,000, and that's those two change orders. I thought that it might be helpful, four of you were through this process, you were here when they came in 2017, but we have three city council members that were not here to go through this entire process. And this was a very complex project, almost like putting a puzzle together. So I thought a little historic information might provide some perspective on this project. Again, I'm on the second page. The existing wastewater treatment plant was built in the 1955 timeframe. There was a couple upgrades in 1982 and 2001. The existing wastewater treatment plant had exceeded its intended design life. The plant actually sits not in the floodplain, it actually sits in the floodway. It was located before all the FEMA flood maps were done. And so there's times we've had to boat staff out of there because it sits in the floodway. The tripling filter treatment process, this process could not meet the more stringent discharge limits or satisfy the projected flows that we'd have in the future. The primary lift station, the pump system is a wet, pump, dry well orientation. This creates an extremely potentially hazardous environment for our personnel. The grid chamber, the equipment is antiquated and required continual maintenance. The secondary clarifier, there was one secondary clarifier, DEQ regulations require two. The system did not have a redundant unit operation. I'm going to skip H, I, and J. You can read those at leisure, but those were other things that were reasons why the plant had to be replaced. The existing wastewater treatment plant was subject to a consent order from DEQ, the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, in not a distant future. It was getting close every day. We held our breath every time DEQ come around that we didn't get a consent order. They provided us a degree of flexibility because they were aware that we were making efforts to get a new plant started. A consent order, if you're not familiar with that, is a mutually agreed upon legally binding document which contains a mandated compliance schedule for taking corrective action to address violations. If we had not moved forward with the new plant, we would more likely have got a consent order that would have set a schedule for us to meet. The wastewater treatment plant from, permit from DEQ was set to expire in September 2020. We were very concerned that that permit would not be renewed if we didn't move forward with the construction of a new wastewater treatment plant. Again, we feel that DEQ worked with us because they were aware of the plans and that we were moving forward. But simply put, the city of Guthrie had to find a way to construct a new wastewater treatment plant. I touched on it a little bit the other day at orientation, but if you go back to 2017 and look at the financial position of the city, we had concerns about the ability to pay the three city employee payrolls in March 2017. So that's where we were financially. In addition to that, we had, of course, we had to do a mid-year budget amendment to balance the budget. But also, during that time period, there was some rate increases or adjustment to utility fees predating 2017, and roughly $260,000 of that rate increase that was supposed to be set aside for payments on the wastewater treatment plant had actually been used in the general fund. It was being transferred to the general fund. So not only did we have to balance our budget and reduce staff over the two- or three-year period, we had to wean ourselves from that transfer where that $260,000 now went to the wastewater treatment plant instead of the general fund operations. So we had some challenges. In addition, at that time, we had to determine how to pay $192,000 judgment that resulted from a wrongful termination order. So our financial situation in 2017 was very challenging. The annual, another challenge that we faced, the annual GPWA bond issue limitation. By our trust indenture, we're limited to $8 million of indebtedness each year. Well, a $20 million project, we had to structure this to figure out how to finance this by spreading the bond issues or the OWRB loans over a three-year period. So we had to do one in December of '21, another one in January of '21, and then the third one in January of '22. So we had to stretch that out to figure out how to finance it. When we issued or awarded the wastewater treatment project contracts, there's three construction contracts, we awarded them in January 19th of 2021. At that time, we had not issued the 2022 bond or loan. So we had to figure out how to budget-wise cover that $3 million gap in financing until we issued that bond. And in blue, you can see the resources that we had from the loan that we had done, the two loans, the Series 2020 and the Series 2021, we had $16 million. We had built up almost $1.2 million in the Fund 65 Wastewater Treatment Plant Fund. That's a new fund we created to start setting aside money for the wastewater treatment plant. $375,000 from the CMOM fee and $66,000 from our operating fund. That left a funding gap of $3 million until we were able to do the 2022 loan. And you can see, we pledged $3 million of other revenue towards this project so that we met funding statutes. A million out of the GPWA unbudgeted fund balance, which at that time was $1.6 million. A million out of the general fund unfunded fund balance with, where we had a lot of our CARAC funds, and then $500,000 from the general stabilization fund and $500,000 out of the GPWA stabilization fund. Another challenge that we had, when, and I didn't put this in the report, but I meant to, in order to finance $20 million, which is a big project for a community our size, even given the fact that our financial situation, but we had to backload the debt service so in 2025, the digester loan would go off. So we had to stretch our payments out so that when the digester loan went off in 2025, then that $38,500 of debt service on the digester loan would then go towards the wastewater treatment plant. In 2025, the Langston waterline loan would be paid off. That's $286,000 that was put in on the backside to fund this. The water treatment plant had been refinanced. That loan matured in 2030. So after 2030, that $1.2 million would go towards debt service on the wastewater treatment plant. And the CMOM loan would mature in 2032. So those all, when those loans were paid off, they were staggered into the debt service plan to retire the bonds for the wastewater treatment plant. So a lot of moving parts to this project. Then when we opened bids on December 9th of 2020, the bids exceeded the July 2020 engineering construction cost estimate collectively for our three construction contracts. The July estimate was $14.4 million, and I'm on the top of page three if you're following. July 17th, again, was $14.4. When we opened bids on December 9th, 2020, collectively, the wastewater treatment construction bids were $20 million. So our bids exceeded our cost estimate by $5.7 million, roughly 39%. City of Edmond had a similar situation in 2017 where they bidded out a much larger wastewater treatment plant, but they experienced the same thing, basically, their bids come in 35% over their cost estimate. So there was a rise in cost, kind of like what we've seen in recent months. We made adjustments because in some respects, we were doing this on a shoestring, and we reduced the collective construction cost to $18,837, $18,837,371. In blue, you can see the adjustments we made to the bids on the Section A, the wastewater treatment plant base bid. We took out alternate D-Duck number one, alternate D-Duck number two, and alternate D-Duck number A4. And then we did a change order to take some of the items of the project out and got that contract down from 15-5 to 14-1. The Section B lift station, we took out alternate D-Duck B1 from that contract, and in Section C, we awarded that as-is. And then we also used city crews, mostly on the entry road if I remember correctly. And so rather than pay full contractor price, all we had to do is buy the materials, and that's what that $120,000 represents. And then the rest of the project budget is there. An editor's note, for the city to be in the financial position that we were in in 2017, to be able to work through all the complex hurdles, to award contracts for construction of a new wastewater treatment plant in January 2021, took creative teamwork, collaboration. We didn't have a choice. We had to get it done. The impact of the HCCCO change order number three that you've been presented tonight and Myers amendments number three and number four, the project contingency that we will have left to finish the project is just under $85,000. We know as we close out the project, there will be some additional change orders or amendments. One, flow equalization basin liner applied to the bottom and walls of the basins will be, another change order coming in near future of roughly $200,000, which will put us over $100,000 over this budget. And then we know we're going to have to adjust the budget item we have for construction and materials testing. Over the next few weeks, we will do a final review of this project and bring the additional change orders and the final budget to you. On the next page of the page I'm on is the budget, and it shows the budget when we awarded the contract back in January. Middle column in green shows the various change orders and amendments, and the adjusted contracts to date shows what the new amounts are. But even if we do 3% overrun on a $20.6 million project, that's roughly $620,000. I don't think we'll get anywhere close to that, but that's really not bad on a $20 million project with today's situation. And the city financial position is strong enough to cover any budget modifications where we were not in that position before. Now we have $7.5 million in reserves to make any adjustments that we might need to make this project. But back at the time we awarded this, we were just trying to figure out how to get the project started because we were under a time gun to get it started. Be glad to answer any questions, but I tried to explain the three change orders and give you some history of how complex this project was put together given our financial situation at the time.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, the riprap, is the site degrading?
So the riprap is along the slope on the backside of one of our roads. That's right around the headworks of the lift station. Again, all the riprap was pulled from the project, all the sod was pulled from the very beginning of the project until the actual dirtwork took place, and we've received a few rains, and we see where the worst erosion's taken place, and that's where we're placing the...
A lot of sand out there, too.
In the flow equalization basins, that's kind of what Leroy kind of touched on. They're roughly 30 foot deep, and we're hitting into some pretty decent sand down in there, and that's probably where we'll see in the future another change order coming.
Are we going to gravel that or white off the road out to it?
It's gravelled going out to it, and then we'll be graveling the site around the lift station or the plant itself.
So this sod and the riprap were taken out of the original bid until we had a better idea of how much we really needed? Is that what I'm hearing you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we knew it was coming. It was just a matter of how much?
We knew that we would need some. We just didn't know how much we would need until the actual site got cut and slopes were determined and where we're at today.
And why, what about the pump, this pump that has flexibility to be used? Is that something, is that a new requirement? How did we miss that in our original, our original bins or original specifications?
What has kind of brought this pump to light was we had an issue at one of our other lift stations where we had lost power, lost the backup generator, had to call multiple vendors, rental companies, trying to chase down a rental pump so we could pump sewage from that lift station, which is out on Division, up over the hill to about hometown rental. This pump, we felt the urgency of this pump, if that same situation was to occur with this lift station handling every bit of our town's sewage and having to get it pumped from this lift station up to our treatment plant, we felt was pretty important after we had that issue down on Division for a backup pump. This pump, again, would solve those issues at any of our lift stations, could be used, as Leroy stated, on major water leaks, could be used currently out at our cottonwood pump station out at the Cottonwood Creek, the intake out there, where we have two pumps. Currently, one of them's down.
So that pump could easily be taken out of other budgets, but since it'll primarily be housed at the wastewater treatment plant, we couldn't think of this one?
And it's not only just a pump, it comes with several sections of six-inch flat lay hose, hydraulic gas-powered pack unit that operates the pump. So there's several pieces to this pump. It's a trailer-mounted pump, six-inch pump.
Okay, all right. Other questions on that change order?
Well, first off, I was here during the whole process, and it was a nightmare project. It really truly was to get it done. Some others were here, too. We all know that. But I, how come this 345,000 never came to us? I mean, we agreed at 270 grand on a project representative, and I know that's an estimate, but that's a far cry from 719. And what if we don't approve that?
The, we're required to have an inspector. We can't do it ourselves because of the limited manpower we have, so we had to have somebody do it. And so it was in the contract and the plan back from 2016 for Myers Engineering to do that. As I indicated, when that project estimate was done in 2016, or 2016, that was before the plant was even designed. And it was based on an estimate of roughly 525 calendar days. Well, when the final design was done, it was determined that the project... that the project would be seven-hundred-and-thirty days, calendar days. So significantly more. And then, of course, this last change order adds a hundred-and-eighty-seven. The work's been done. We owe the six-hundred-and-fifteen, which would be the first three-hundred-and-forty-five, three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five fifty. We had so many moving parts, we knew we had substantial contingencies. But technically, at the time we awarded the contract, we should have amended that amount at that time. But quite frankly, we had so many moving parts. You're dependent upon a lot of players in putting this together. It comes down to the final responsibility as a city manager. We should have done an amendment at that time. And so we are playing council. But that work has been done and we do owe that amount. And then amendment number four is just frankly to do the rest of the inspections through October eighteenth to finish out the project.
So we owe that amount or we've already paid?
We've already paid.
Yeah. So we don't owe it. We paid it.
Correct.
Okay. We paid it without it coming to council.
I have a question.
That's a big no.
On inspections, by limited experience in construction projects, nothing of this size, certainly. Inspections were done at certain stages of completion. But you're saying there's a representative of Myers out there every single day?
Correct.
Watching every bit of work?
Correct. And that is a standard set, my understanding from OWRB, when you borrow money from them.
Well, it looks to me like my, where's Bill? I need some, I got some questions for him because it looks like they overbilled us anyway on this stuff. Because I mean, I'm looking at, I got an average per day of seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars when we agreed at four, five-fourteen.
Well, I was going to ask a similar question.
But if, if you take the hundred-and-four thousand, I haven't done that yet. Just to see what our daily rate is on this thing, divided by a hundred-and-eighty-seven is five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. So it looks like on the three-forty-five, we were gouged on that.
The, the problem is when the estimate was done in 2016, it was based on the hourly rate of inspectors in 2016.
I know, but their number, and I'm not hammering you. You broke your back getting this thing done. Don't get me wrong. But the hundred-and-four thousand that we haven't paid yet for the last hundred-and-eighty-seven days is five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars a day, which is insane for an inspector to start with. I remember having issues with the two-seventy in the inspector costs.
It, it's a hundred-and-nineteen dollars a day, if I remember right.
Okay, a hundred-and-four thousand dollars divided by a hundred-and-eighty-seven days is five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars a day.
Much more than that. It's two-hundred-and-ten days.
We've been overcharged big time.
Two-hundred-and-ten days.
Are you saying that from 2016 till now, there was just like that much of a increase in that rate, going rate? Is that what you're saying?
The rate and the number of days.
Number of days.
But we have done a spreadsheet that I'd be glad to show you on their billing and the number of days and that kind of stuff. And the billing is correct. It's just the rate went from ninety to, and then each year it would go up. So if you actually look at the bills, they do calculate out. And I'd be glad to sit down and walk you through that.
And of course, the days basically about doubled.
Correct.
About doubled.
Correct. And then, of course, each year, there's an increase in the cost of the inspector.
So a double whammy.
Correct.
Well, we went from, we got five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, or five-hundred-and-twenty-five days at two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. That's five-fourteen a day, not ninety dollars a day. Okay? And then we go to, to three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand for another seven-hundred-and-thirty days. Okay? And I didn't even do that one, but it's nowhere near a hundred bucks. Okay? The whole thing is seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars a day, average. We've been grossly overbilled on this, guys. And we paid it. Is what I see.
I think if, if I showed you the spreadsheet, it would show you the calculations. And I believe they are correct.
Four-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars on the seven-hundred-and-thirty days, but yet it's five-fourteen on the ones up there and it's five-fifty-six on these.
Well, I think originally the estimate, that price, we can't really count on that at all. As far as the rate per hour and all that stuff, you can't really look at anything if you're getting out of the seven-thirty.
Eddie, have you looked at any of those?
In reality.
Because I'd like to have some questions, if you've seen any of it.
Yes, sir. I, I have. I believe we were, and I was trying to get here now. The figure Leroy was quoting, estimated average cost per hour at the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar estimate was ninety dollars an hour.
An hour? But I'm talking daily.
Yes. So ninety dollars an hour, if you assume an eight-hour work bidding, there's seven-twenty.
Right.
Seven-twenty per day. And in the time, the distance between 2016 to 2021, it went from ninety dollars an hour to a hundred-and-twenty dollars an hour. So.
But that never came to council, is my understanding, because I don't remember that.
The, the contract done under previous city manager in 2016, the way it was worded, it was worded as an estimate. And the agreement at that time was to pay for a full-time inspector every weekday throughout the project. And the two-seventy was just an estimate. So it was structured as an estimate and it was a hourly billing, not a lump sum amount. So the way the contract was set up in 2016 by the previous city manager and that went to the city council for approval, that was just a figure put in to have a holding place. But the agreement actually said that it would be whatever it would be based on the hourly rate for that year and the number of construction days.
Wow. Sorry. But we don't have a copy-
It was approved, but it was in general terms.
But we don't have, yeah, when, I get it. But we don't have a copy of that contract in here either to even refer to.
No, but it can be provided. It was a contract approved back in 2016 by the city council at that time.
A 2016 council can't, I mean, you cannot, you can't bind a future council.
No. And you can't bind it every year or anything.
I mean, you can't, you can't, you cannot-
The Public Works Authority can do multi-year contracts. City council cannot.
So the Public Works can, can go?
Multiple years.
Okay.
And that's why they can borrow money, because they can go multiple years. City council cannot.
But these still should have come to us, right? Because it didn't.
Technically, the contract in 2016 provided for this. We should have brought it to you and done an amendment when we awarded the contract in 2021. We, we made an error there. We should have done that. But we already were contractually obligated to. But it would have been easier if we would have brought it to you in pieces rather than lump sum. And I just tell you, there's just so many moving parts in this project that this is one piece that got overlooked until we went back and reviewed and got ready to close out the project. And we had the money in our contingency to pay it. But it would have been better if we would have brought you change orders along the way, which we didn't do.
The other reality is what the hell were our options at that? I, I mean, at that point, we've already, we've got a contract here. We've got a, we've got, we've got a requirement by the state to have a full-time professional inspector there. You know, I, I think our hands are kind of a little bit tied anyway.
Even if we'd have brought you multiple change orders along the way, it has still been the same result, but you'd have been better informed.
It's a procedural error, Steve, in a big way.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just-
Big time.
I'm just saying, right now, we, we, we can't correct that, number one.
Is the hourly just the way, plus materials or?
Ask the question.
Is the, the hourly rate we were talking about, the seven-hundred, is that with everything?
That's daily.
That's daily. Yeah. Is that including, is that just the rate for that inspector to be there?
Correct. With overhead. It's not his hourly rate, but with overhead, that's what it costs.
So that number is with material and everything, right? You say overhead?
Well, benefits, overhead from the company, just like any private business has overhead. That's all built in when you do a rate structure. You take what the hourly rate is for an employee and then you add the benefits and the company's overhead to it. And that's all included in a hundred-and-nineteen dollars. But as the mayor indicated, yes, there was a procedural flaw here. And it should be a learning experience for both the engineer and city staff. But it happened.
The engineers should take some liability on this, too. That's why I wanted Bill Myers to talk to.
I don't know that, yes, he has some responsibility, but I don't know it would change the cost.
I don't know that it would either. Why don't we have him here? That's the question. He's on the agenda, but he's not here. He just randomly arbitrarily just says, I'm not showing up?
What I was getting at with my question was, and if you can help me understand, it's probably, I'm probably just not understanding. But usually when I get like an estimate on the depot or whatever, or any kind of business venture, I, it's always assumed that, yeah, your days might go longer because they run into issues. And it's just why it's an estimate. But I've never really seen that, I've never really had an agreement. And then what they tell me they're going to pay for their rate is just thrown at me surprisingly and has just gone up because they want it to go up. I see materials because of inflation and I see days, but I've just never seen anybody go, yeah, I'll do it for this rate.
Any engineer that you work with, if you do a multi-year contract, their rates are adjusted annually based on Consumer Price Index and other inflation indicators, just like we adjust our rates.
So that's normal. But, okay, that's all, that's all.
So I guess my question is, given the cost overrun, what was your estimate at this point for cost overruns through completion?
If you look at the budget, which is at the end of the report, we had built in nine-
Nine-hundred.
Nine-hundred-and-fourty-one thousand to cover any cost overruns and contingency. And we, with these change orders, we will be using all of that, prior change orders and these, will be down to eighty-five thousand dollars in contingency. So the budget covers that, but we know there's at least two change orders yet that we'll probably be looking at.
Or more.
There may be more, but I don't think they'll be significant. But I don't have a crystal ball.
Given, given the fact that economists in the world are, are always wrong. Yeah, I mean, always wrong. I mean, they're really good at explaining what happened after it happens. But, you know, I mean, I don't think anybody could have seen the perfect storm of COVID and then a supply chain disruption to the extent that we saw over the last five years. And so I guess, you know, like I, I don't think that a doomsday scenario is eighty-five or eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars at this point, given the, the fact that, you know, I, I, we've got just an enormous amount of runaway inflation at this-
We were in a financial bind in 2017. So we had to piecemeal this project together like a puzzle. We had several challenges. We got it funded, got it started. We were close to getting a consent order mandate to do it. We didn't have any choice. The plant had reached the end of its life. Mandated to have an inspector. And so the outcome would be the same. But you're right, it should have come to you all in pieces along the way. And it was an oversight that it didn't. And, and beat me up all day.
No, not beating you up. Not beating you up. But Bill should have been here, too.
I understand.
Explaining his increases, which he didn't. And he should take responsibility for that and eat the increase is what he should do.
I don't know that he should eat the increase because it, it was in the contract in a way that it was open-ended. I did not negotiate that contract. That contract was signed before I got here.
Yeah, but work didn't start till three years later, though.
Correct.
You know, that's, and we've, and we've had a lot of meetings on this prior to work starting, a lot. And, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, I get what you're saying. Economists are always wrong. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about, well, if we look at what Myers Engineering has charged just since I've been on council, I couldn't even tell you how much it is, let alone since its inception, it's probably twenty, thirty million. Okay? And on top of that, I don't even know that we're allowed to spend three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand without council approval by state statutes, are we? I think that's a problem. In my company, that happens. Leg heads roll, you know, right across the board.
Bear in mind that every council meeting, every expenditure is in a report that you all get to look at. You don't formally approve it, but you get a report at every city council meeting that has all those expenditures in it for you to review if you want to review it.
I guess we wouldn't think-
So these payments were, were in those reports?
Yeah. So I wouldn't think to, given the trust I had in management, okay? Seriously, now goes to you. I wouldn't have thought that I would have had to get down to a line item basis to find basically almost four-hundred grand, you know? And then Kim, as the court clerk, shouldn't you have been bringing that to council?
City clerk.
I mean, the city clerk?
The amendments, change orders?
The overpayment here. There's, there's a lot of overpayments that have happened that we weren't aware of.
I guess, I mean, the way I, I mean, the, the project was approved for twenty million dollars and we're within that budget. We're going to spend twenty million dollars on this project.
Yeah, but this one procedural error sucked up almost the entire contingency. That's a problem.
Which is my point. I, I don't know that eighty-five thousand dollars is sufficient to cover through 2025. It's not, that's not going to be sufficient to cover through 2025.
It never gonna be.
No.
Because they weren't expecting that there was not, in that nine-hundred-and-some-thousand contingency, four-hundred thousand of that wasn't an expected pull on that contingency.
Yeah. For, you know, fortunately, we're in a better financial position now.
And we are because of you. We're not giving you that.
We can, we can do that. I mean, I'm not trying to make excuses. I guess I'm saying, folks, here's where we are. I mean, we've, we've already, we've already committed to this.
I don't think we have any choices at all.
No. We've already committed to it. We've learned a few lessons along the way.
But Myers Engineering-
All of us have learned.
I'm pretty confident Myers Engineering knew bills were going out and weren't coming to council and getting paid.
Well.
Maybe we did it wrong, but we still had to do it.
Still had to do it. And, and the bills, bills are, are listed in our minutes. I mean, our, the financials of every bill that, that-
Like I said, I guess in the future, we have to go down with a fine-tooth comb and look at every line item of two-hundred-and-fifty different lines, every council meeting.
I think this was just a, like you said, I think it was just a mistake.
No, it was not a mistake. It was blatant.
By what?
By the whole, by somebody. By blatantly paying, by blatantly overpaying without coming to council.
You're, you're making it sound like this is a, almost a fraud thing. Well, it isn't. It's what, it's what our contract initially, which Leroy didn't have anything to do with, had flexibility in it. I'm not defending it. I'm just saying, here's what, here's what the facts are.
Because you kind of are, okay, defending it about a hundred percent.
I'm saying that the contract was there. It had flexibility to move upward.
But the contract was not-
Just let me finish.
Okay, go ahead. Finish.
The contract was there. It had flexibility in, to increase the, the, in this case, the, the engineering fee. It was a, it was a fee that was, that was mandated by the state, had to have it done. It's a hell of a lot of money. Understand that.
This is not a fee mandated by the state. This is a fee mandated by Myers Engineering. And on top of that, it tripled. It went from two-hundred-and-seventy thousand to seven-hundred-and-twenty.
Well, I think it-
Okay? And it was paid out of the, out of the contingency.
Because, because it's a combination of the fee and the number of days involved. Agreed? Okay.
I do agree. There's a hundred-and-eighty-seven days that, well, none of those we approved. Okay? I mean, it's coming to us after the fact, my friend.
I don't disagree with that, but it's done.
And so what is, what is your input on this? Because you're the new guy.
I think this has been a learning experience. And, and we've all observed and we know going forward, we're going to implement some try-
we're going to implement some tracking measures to prevent it in the future.
What, what would, example, like what do you mean?
We're, we're going to track each invoice.
So each increments, like we were saying?
Yeah, every invoice that comes through, no matter what it is, I've already sent out a template to staff last week. We will track each invoice and every pay request will come before the council as an agenda item, not just in your claims, so.
What happens if we deny one of those? Like, yes, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with Brian at all.
We can't deny the three hundred and forty-five thousand already paid.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with Brian, but I'm kind of like, I'm asking what the mayor is asking is like, so if you do bring them to us in increments that were under, what is our actual options there?
In this case, your option, the outcome would, would be the same because you had to have an inspector. We didn't have any other options other than Myers to do the inspection. We're shorthanded. We don't have staff to do it.
There's only one, there's only one company in the state that can do the inspection.
We couldn't have like.
It's not just certified to do these inspections.
Pardon?
You have to be licensed and certified.
Right, but I.
And you have to be approved by the Oklahoma River Water.
I've used this before.
And, and yes, I mean, you could, on other projects, you could do, shop around for engineers. But remember, under state statute, on professional services like architects, engineers, building design trade skills, it is not a bid process. You take their resume and their presentation and say, if you have five engineers make a proposal to, to any city government, you rank them a point scale. And whoever is the most points, then you award the contract to them if you are comfortable that you've reached a, a fair price. If you think they're exorbitant, then you go to the second choice and negotiate with them. But it's not a bid process. You don't know the company, if you turn down company A or number one, the company B is going to be any cheaper when you go to them. And if you look at FEMA and other state entities we've looked at in the past on what their scale is for engineering services based on different sized projects, Myers Engineering has been within that scale of what is acceptable based on studies done by federal entities. So we've had no reason, and the way the city works with Myers Engineering is they do a selection process every five years and sign a contract with Bill as a master agreement. And then they do task orders on each one of those projects. That current contract that we renewed in twenty-one runs through July of twenty-six. Now, it, it is, because it's with the city council, it's subject to termination. If you give sixty days notice before August, you can terminate that on an annual basis. Otherwise, it automatically renews. But we have, in twenty-one, went through a selection process and picked Mel Bars as, as the engineer. We have found that when you compare him to other sliding scales, FEMA, others, that he's in the competitive range. Myers has been engineer for the city for over twenty years, maybe longer, has drawings, knows all of our utility lines. And if you selected somebody else, you would also be paying for a learning curve because they would have to learn a lot of things about our community that they already know.
Yeah, they know, they've looked up, they know every bone about us. There's no question.
It's not a question of that. I'm just saying, like, if we do, if it is brought to us in these increments and we already have a contract with them, they bring it to the increments. Well, if we see increases in these increments and we don't agree with it, I mean, what, what course of action can we do? You can just say sorry.
In this particular case, you really have no option. It's, it's a question that you were not, you should have been better informed. The option would not change. You would still be paying this, but you would have been better informed.
But you're.
And that's our fault.
You're, I'll refer to your answer a moment ago in which you said, I didn't negotiate the contract. Would you have negotiated that contract?
If I had negotiated the contract, I would have been more aware of the open-ended estimate on the inspection and would have been more attuned that it needed to be adjusted when we awarded the contract. But I guess it was an assumption on my part that that contract already covered everything. And we had so many moving parts on trying to figure out how to finance this, how to put it together, how we had to adjust, the bids came in higher, we had to adjust those. We just had so many moving parts. We, I think we addressed everything but this, this particular item. And, and yes, we, we could have structured it different, but I wasn't here in two thousand and sixteen.
I'm not, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying, would you, I mean, we're going, again, I, I am not looking at this from what's been done in the past. What I want is to know, like, what can we learn so that we don't do it in the future? And then my, my, my concern about the economic, the economics of the situation and the potential for cost overruns is I just would like to know what is the worst-case scenario that we're going to have to plan for and attempt to find ways of covering future cost overruns. I mean, that, that's what I, I, I'm just looking prospectively. How do we go about planning? And, and, you know, I mean, we can look at the data from the past and see what the cost is and sort of look at a scatter plot and, and, and then project out from there. And so that's, that's my, that's my concern is, I, 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 I agree, like this, like there's, you know, this is, what's done is done. I want to know going forward what we can do to mitigate.
Mr. Bother, I think this has been a learning experience. And I, I don't think that this scenario will play out again. I think in the future, the city council will be more aware of these type of things so that there's an awareness. I don't know that it would change the course, but, but better informed would have, would have been an improvement.
I just have one last thing and it kind of goes back to, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for blame here, okay? But you keep bringing up, I wasn't here in two thousand and sixteen, I didn't look at that contract, but you damn sure did all of the exceeded collective cost estimates in two thousand and twenty, in December of two thousand and twenty that came to council. And on top of that, that was over five point six million dollars. And there was none of this in there. So, you know, you obviously looked at the, somebody looked at the contract because, I mean, you can't just come up with these cost estimates without going through the contract. That's all. And if there should have been changes to it, we should have made the changes then. And again, I don't even know, and, and maybe there is none, but I don't even know the legalities of being able to write checks that big without council approval. So that's where I'm at.
I have one more question. Considering we're this close to final October, I mean, considering up to now, the materials that have doubled in price, we all know because of supply chains and COVID and all that, has the materials to finish this job, are they purchased and on-site? Are they?
We, the only thing that we're, we're, on the one basin, we're going to have to beef up what was in the original contract because the soil studies were different than what we anticipated. So it will take more of that product to.
Which is, we're talking about the riprap and that stuff there.
No, the two hundred thousand dollar addition.
But mechanically pumps and pipes and?
Flow equalization basin liner applied to the bottom of the walls of the basins. It was anticipated what the makeup of the soil was when the project was originally done. After we dug it out, the soil type is a different mixture than what we anticipated. And so we're going to have to have additional materials to get what our minimum standards. That's going to cost us about two hundred thousand dollars to do that. I'm aware of another, roughly fifty thousand. Fifty thousand dollar change. So right now, we got eighty-five thousand dollars. And to, to my knowledge, we've got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in more change orders. So with that, will be roughly a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on the budget. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. There may be other things we find between now and October, but to my knowledge, that's all we have on the horizon.
And that's the sandy soil that you're talking about. We're almost have to double the amount of bentonite to mix with that sandy soil to produce a liner for the bottom of them every, every state.
And that was sort of an unforeseen.
So let me ask a question. Doesn't pertain to that. It pertains to voting on this thing. What are the legalities of voting money spent that haven't came to council? Because council can be liable for certain issues, obviously. And we know already that we're voting on something that's already been done. So I want to know the legality of it. And I guess that may be you.
I don't think you have a choice. It's a contractual obligation that the city has. I agree that it should have come to council earlier. I agree with everything that's been said on that. But I don't think you want to create a.
But I'm not, I can't see the contract to know that that's what it is. I don't have it in front of me. So I'm going to have to vote to table this thing till we have copies of the contracts and look at the contracts and see where we're at.
Yeah, I think you have that option.
Yeah. So that's going to be my motion to table it till we look at the contracts till the next council meeting. And just, we can vote it then. It's already spent. It's not like it's, that somebody's waiting to do work because we've already spent it.
I would interject, the change order number three for the additional items for HCC, H triple CO, those things do need to get ordered and stuff. So I would recommend that if you table anything, you table the two amendments to bars, but at least approve change order number three.
You mean, number one?
Item number four.
Four. Item number four. Item number four.
I would recommend you at least approve it.
Unless you approve.
Hold on, which one? I'm looking for item four.
Item number four on the top of the page. Brian?
I was looking at this.
The agenda item number four.
On the first page.
Oh, okay.
Agenda item number four.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second then to approve change order number one.
That's one thirty.
Change order number three for four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand to H triple CO for the water treatment plant facility.
But in that four hundred and eleven thousand, I was fixated on other numbers at the time. That, that's for the, the sod, the riprap, the overhead coiling, the pump?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
That's the things that are on the front page of.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second then, right?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote through.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with, to approve change order number three for four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars to H triple CO. Item number five then is discussion and possible action to approve amendment number, number three for Myers Engineering.
And I'm going to make a motion to table that till we can have copies of the contract or table it to the next meeting.
I'll see.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Are there time elements that we're concerned about here?
They've already paid it, Steve.
It, it's already been paid, that amount. I, if, the next one, if it's not approved, I'm not sure how that's going to affect our inspections of the rest of the project, I mean, for the next two weeks.
No, I'm just, if it'll bring peace to Brian, what's, what's the two weeks?
I'm, I'm sure they won't quit inspecting it. Well, they wait for the final answer, but.
Well, I mean, they've been paid, so how can they?
Well, not for them.
No, not, not on, not on six.
That's to finish the project.
They've been paid on, on item number five.
They're not going to leave. They've overbilled us anyway.
So we have a motion. Is there any other discussion on the, on the motion to table?
For both five and six is what I'm doing, but.
Two weeks for five and six?
Yes.
You agree with it, the second?
Yes.
We can get a copy of the contract and we have that tomorrow.
Any other discussion?
Do we have to vote on these separately, since they're separate agenda items?
I would suggest you do, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I would.
All right.
So item number five first?
Do you want to amend your, amend your?
Amendment item number five to table number five.
Agree with you?
For two weeks.
Yes, sir.
To just, okay, we're just, amendment number, the motion is to amend item number, agenda number five.
Table it.
I'm sorry, table. Table for until the next city council meeting is.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
Case.
How many times have I had to vote?
I'll vote through.
I told you, I don't vote, you don't even know.
I voted three times.
By a vote of six to one, motion carries to carry that item on to the next city council meeting with appropriate documentation.
Number six, I make the same thing.
Item number six, motion then is made to move that to the next city council meeting.
I would like Bill Myers here for that meeting if possible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote through.
Let's see the votes. By motion, by a vote of six to one, that motion carries both those items, item number five, number six, to be on the next city council agenda.
The next public works agenda.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, you're adjourned. Called to order our city council meeting of June sixth. Second item on the agenda is consent agenda items A through E. A is the approval of the city minutes of May sixteenth. B is the approval of the special city council minutes, minutes of May thirtieth. C is the approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one for the Omega recognition program. D is approval payment of invoices for HVAC, replacement of buildings, library, fire department, GPWA administration buildings, the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. And E is the approval of payment of invoices from WOS Lighting for lighting for the fire department in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
So moved.
Second of a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is everything completed, all of it? Are they all, Tini, is all these projects completed?
Are we talking about? All these projects, I'm not familiar with all these projects. Lighting, the fire station, I don't.
No, sir. This pay request will be for work that has been completed. You're paying for work that's been completed as a part of the contract that's already been approved.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote through.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to approve the consent agenda items A through E. Item number three, discussion and possible action to confirm mayor's appointment of Adam Ropp, Brian Bothroyd and Grant Greary to the finance committee for a two-year term expiring May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote through.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to appoint Adam Ropp, Brian Bothroyd, Grant Greary to the finance committee for a two-year term. Item number four, discussion and possible action to confirm mayor's appointments of Jeff, Jeff Taylor, Jim Case and Tracy Williams to the streets committee for a two-year term expiring May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote through.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to appoint Jim Case, Jeff Taylor, Tracy Williams to the streets committee. committee for terms expiring May 6th, 2025. Item number five, discussion and possible action by the city council to confirm the appointment of council member Adam Ropp to serve as ex-official member of the historic preservation commission for a term expiring May 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to appoint, city council to appoint Adam Ropp to serve as executive, ex-official member of the historic preservation commission. Item number six, discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 3392, request to rezone property at 1102 West Mansour from R1 to R2.
Dan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a property that's located just north of Banner Park over on the west side. As you indicated, they're looking to rezone it to R2. The applicant wants to put two single-family residences on the lot, and obviously, it would need to be rezoned to R2 for that. Just to add, this was a property where we had a couple houses at one time, and we had two different abatement processes and got all that torn down. And so not only is it good to see it redevelop, but we also got all the liens paid off on it for all the abatement we had. So this is another one of those success stories, if you want to say. The planning commission recommended approval 40 to recommend approval of the request from R1 number two.
Is this north of Banner?
Yes, it's right on that corner of 10th and Mansour.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, were there any citizen comments back?
None.
None. Okay, any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval to adopt ordinance number 3392 to rezone that property at 1102 West Mansour, R1 to R2. Item number seven, approve award bidding, award bid number 2023-2, demolition and site clearance to K and M Wrecking or demolition on 320 West Vilas and 414 South Drexel for a total of $12,300. And Roughnecks Industrial for the demolition of properties at 30, 310 South Capital, 423 East Grant, and 1008 East Springer for a total of $19,100. Dan?
I'm just going to add, obviously, this is from our dilapidated structures resolution that came back in March. As you saw, there were 16 properties, 11 of them have either gotten their building permits or in the process, or had self-compliance with demolition. There's a couple of them that may come about in the near future, depending on how that goes, but once again, we've had a lot of voluntary help on both the fixing upside and demolition side, so it's nice that we don't have to always tear as many down in that. But as you indicated, this will be a total of five houses for $31,400.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of the council then to award bids number 2023-02 to K and M Wrecking and Roughneck Industrial. Item number eight, city manager report. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor, Council, I'll try to be brief. We continue to monitor the water levels at both the lakes for some information slash history. Liberty Lake, from February to May, we've been pumping out of the Cottonwood into Liberty to try and bring that lake level up. From February to May, we have brought the level up by about five and a half feet. Tenny, was that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've also seen Lake Guthrie, although it has had, we have had some rain last couple of weeks, we had four inches two weeks ago, it only came up a foot, so we're still seven foot below the spill line. We continue to monitor that, we're looking at additional opportunities for water sources in what we need to do in the future to prevent an issue like this. Looking at historical data out at the Public Works facility, the last time that the lake levels were anywhere close to what we're seeing today was 2011. So in 2011, Liberty Lake was 10 feet below, and Guthrie Lake was eight feet below. So, prior to 2011, you saw a little bit of an issue, nowhere near as bad in 2007. So we're seeing, 2007 to 11, there's not much of a trend there, 2011 and now, you've got 12 years. So we are working on some alternatives in the future, we will be bringing to you at some point. Off the cuff, you can expect an additional pump to go out of Cottonwood Creek, and then an additional pump at the water treatment plant that's utilized for backwashing the filters. So we've got two of those pumps, they are supplying all of the water for the city, and so we'll need backups for each of those. We want to be prepared. If those pumps run in 24 hours a day, it does not make sense to not have a backup ready to go. The airport director position, we are moving forward with the candidate after a couple of interviews. We've got a third interview scheduled this Friday. I believe we've got a good, solid candidate, so look forward to that. Fire chief marshal, the application period did close on Monday. We received a total of six applicants, four of which we are going to interview, two internal candidates. That interview will take place next week sometime. And then, lastly, I want to give a couple of shout-outs to the staff that have been working on some, some events over the weekend, Red Brick Nights, Shonda, Justin, and the team, they've done a great job with that. As well as Friday at 2:00 in the afternoon, I happened to receive an email, the mayor got it as well, from the Oklahoma Municipal League about additional funding opportunities for energy efficiency available to municipal outlets. This email came in Friday afternoon about 1:43, deadline Monday at 5:00. Team Guthrie did what Team Guthrie does, Justin, Jesse, Liz, as well as Lynn over at the Capitol Publishing Museum, and a few others worked pretty quickly. They got us everything we needed to at least submit a letter of intent to apply, got us in the first round, so we'll see, we're hopeful. The minimum amount was approximately $200,000, and we submitted close to $400,000. So, that's additional HVAC upgrades, city hall, the airport, and then Capitol Publishing Museum. So, that's all I've got for now.
Keep it up, man, keep it up.
Hey, it is not me, it is the staff. So we're working as a team, so.
Good, good news.
Thank you.
Okay, and hope we get those granted, okay? Item number nine, comments from council, Councilman Case.
Seventy-nine years ago was D-Day. A lot of people died that day, O'Mile Beach. Just keep them, keep those dreams in your mind, it's, it's easy to forget.
Councilman Bothroyd?
Um, nothing tonight.
Councilman Agory?
I just had a couple of things. After the city council workshop and training, I had some questions, and I didn't know if anybody else had questions. We didn't really have time for a lot of questions during that period because everybody, you know, was scheduled until noon, and so if nobody else has questions, I can just ask Eddie and the city attorney. But if other people have questions, it might be useful to schedule another, like, follow-up on that training so that people can ask questions. Also, when I went, went on city council previously, part of the training that they did, that Brett Jones did, that I thought was helpful, was they actually, he actually took the new council members out to all of the city facilities so that they could, you know, like, understand what's going on, for example, at the wastewater treatment facility, so you have some working knowledge when people call and ask about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think that's, I think that's useful to, you know, have some idea of the city. There's also, I have questions about the gas tanks out at the airport. Those have been brought up to me by constituents and users of the airport and the concern there and the FBO situation, so if I could get a report on that, an update, I would appreciate it, and I think that was all I had to think of.
All right. Councilman Ropp?
Nothing at all, thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, staff, I know you all worked extra hard on this, trying to get this all together so we can get it passed, but we'll get it at the next meeting. Thank you, Eddie, I appreciate what you're doing too, but I know it's tough, you're getting thrown into the fire, but I think you're doing an excellent job.
What I signed up for, thank you, then.
That's it.
Councilman Williams?
Not to correct you, Mr. Mayor, but on the west side, we call that street Mansour, not Mansoor.
Oh.
Thank you.
And we don't. I'll remember that, I'll.
We don't eat great upon.
I must have picked that up on my French.
You picked it up on the east side.
Picked it up on the east side. Yeah, right, okay, thank you very much. Just a couple things, again, Red Brick Nights, huge success, everybody involved, city staff, volunteers throughout the community, involved with that, North Church, just, you know, again, start of another great Red Brick Night season, but, you know, really, really super. The citizens should know that we went through a council orientation focused for the new council members, but every, all the councilmen were invited, and many of us were here. We had, there were representatives that have done, done this orientation at cities throughout the state for 15 or 20 years, I believe they said, and complimented the city on the quality of the orientation that is given for new, new members of the council, as well as complimented the city for many of the processes that it does in place. In fact, you said that we could definitely be a model for other cities throughout the state, so I think that, that is good for people that see other, other community city councils in operation from a close-up standpoint. And I think this coming Saturday, I think that, believe that there is a activity down at the, at, at our incubator shops.
Yes.
We have jazz, some jazz going on, I think about 7:00.
Yes, sir.
It's a great opportunity, again, for the community to come out almost in a Red Brick Night environment, but also to see these incubators and, up close, and, and have some fun.
So the shops will not be open on Saturday. We have, the shops being open has, has been a little bit of a contentious spot, so with the public works crew doing all of the labor in-house, we were allowing the vendors, the folks who are leasing the facilities, to use the facilities prior to completion as a courtesy for a soft opening. Well, we ran into a couple of issues with moving the vendors in and out for one-day events. So what we're looking at now, after the Red Brick Nights in May, we postponed any more activity inside the physical shop buildings until Red Brick Nights in July, which Tenny hopefully will be finished. His guys have been out there every day, so I think they're down to paint at this point, paint and floor.
Painting the floor and installing HVACs.
Okay, so HVACs are still active, so. The goal is Red Brick Nights in July, and that's when they'll open back up and will be open, open, so.
Okay, all right. But there will be a, a festival activity there this Saturday with the jazz music and so, probably some invited, come on, come down, down and see that, another good opportunity, come on, downtown Guthrie America.
What time will that start?
7:00.
7:00, okay.
7:00.
Yeah, I had one other thing. Given the fact that we're doing a lot of these sort of changes to zoning for infill, I just was wondering if we could look at sort of the plans. I think if you look broadly at what's going on in Oklahoma City, in, for example, south of Class and Curve and the infill that they're doing there, and putting in multifamily sort of units, I think that's something that's worth exploring. And also, looking at sort of, you know, the trend in terms of the aesthetics of those buildings. So that was the other thing, and I forgot, I should have written it down, sorry.
And we could work towards a workshop on that down the road.
Yeah, I will tell you, Dan, Dan has been very proactive in trying to make the zoning code for revisions, et cetera. I haven't had the capacity to be a part of that yet, so at some point here relatively soon, we will, to work on that, look at those overlay districts. You'll, you'll see increased density, just like in the zoning change you approved tonight. You've got two dwellings on three original lots, but it's one lot now, so we're definitely on board with heading towards infill density.
Okay.
And remember, you only have five minutes to talk about this, okay?
Take more than. Okay. Who else? We're adjourned.